Hello, I'm Andrea Mulrain with the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County, and I want to thank you for tuning in to listen to our candidates for Scranton School Director. This year, we'll be electing four directors, and some of them are cross-filled on both the Democratic and Republican tickets. There are seven who are cross-filled and three who will only be on the Democratic ticket. So if you're a registered Dem, you have a choice of 10 who are running for this office, and if you are a Republican, you have a choice of seven of these folks. And as we go through the candidates, we'll try to make sure that we tell you which ones will be seen on each one of those tickets. So we do have 10 candidates. All of them have agreed to participate in the interviews today, and we have a series of about six questions that we'll be asking them, allowing them two minutes for a closing statement. None of the questions, as usual, have been given in advance. They'll all have two minutes to answer those questions. And our first candidate today that we have with us is current incumbent school director, Robert Casey. So, Robert, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
So, Robert, as I said, is an incumbent. He's serving his first term as a Scranton School Board Director. He was born, raised in Scranton, graduated from Scranton High School, and earned his degree, his undergraduate degree, from East Stroudsburg University in Business Management, History, and Political Science. He serves now as Scranton's representative on the NEIU 19 Board, and has also served as the St. John Newman Parish Summer Picnic Volunteer since 2012, and that's his civic experience. His professional experience, Robert was a customer service representative at Garrity's for about 10 years, and since 2016, has now served as an auditor for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, working under Pennsylvania Auditor General, and he works auditing volunteer fire companies. So I think that's a pretty interesting job.
Oh, it is.
So, with that, we're going to get right to the questions and allow Robert the time to tell everybody about who and what he is and why he's running for office. So the first question, Robert, school board members, as you know, and I always say this, are elected volunteers unpaid for their service for what I know is an extremely important job. You're a current school director. Tell us, for those who may not know, what is the role of a school director?
Thank you. I just want to start out by saying thank you for having me. This is a forum to let all the voters know what each candidate stands for. And to get into your question, the role of a school director is to set policy in the Scranton School District. Our roles are not to overstep those bounds by getting involved in the day-to-day activity. They are to let the individuals like the superintendent, the business manager, and personnel director, and the buildings operator to carry out the mission of the school district and to carry out the policies that we set place at monthly meetings. It's an extremely important job that sometimes goes, you overlook in government because education really, public education truly is the backbone of our nation.
Okay. So, the next question, why should voters reelect you? What is your experience or major accomplishments that are relevant? And most importantly, what distinguishes you from the other candidates? Why should I vote for you?
Well, I am an incumbent, so I do have experience on the board. I am also a representative on the NEIU 19 Board, where we deal with 20 surrounding area school districts. A big thing that people need to realize with this type of form of government where you work with the board, where one director, one councilman, we can't affect change by ourselves. That is something, it's impossible. It takes the majority to do. So with that, you need someone who is open-minded and with the ability to work with other directors. I think in my four years of being on the school board and the three years of being a representative to the NEIU 19, I worked with somewhere in the ballpark of 50 directors, and I've been able to agree with and work with 48 of them. One person did not get the school district into financial disarray, and one person is not going to be able to bring us out. It's open-mindedness and a willingness to work together. Some things that I've been a part of by being on the board is, we have raised scores for the district, for our children in testing. We're nowhere near where we need to be with that, because anyone can tell you that you can never be content with where you stand. And by giving our administrators and our teachers the, excuse me, the resources necessary to promote education, I believe that our scores will continue to go up. Another thing that we've done is, we've put in place a tax reassessment for non-commercial properties to bring in additional revenues rather than one-time revenues that does not help the budget going forward.
Okay. So, you brought up financial issues, and that's my next question. By all accounts, the district is facing serious financial issues. Share your knowledge of the issues and how you think they can be solved. And I just want to say that my next question is going to focus on the infrastructure. So let's talk about things other than infrastructure right now.
Okay, so, it is no surprise that we are not one of the only districts with a financial crisis strapped to our budget. We need to, I think the first thing we need to do as a new board is, we need to bring in a person who is a grant writer, a full-time grant writer, a position that would pay for itself. I think that is key. It brings in not one-time revenues, like I addressed in the previous question, not one-time shot in the arms that'll help us in that year's budget. We also need to begin to harp on our state legislators, Representative Flynn, Hagerty, Senator Blake, to fight for us down in Harrisburg. We are an extension of them. We need to utilize that to, that should be a strength of ours. We also need to work with PSBA and advocates of fair funding formulas to help out urban school districts like Scranton to receive fair funding. It is something that 47 states have put in place before us, and we just put it in place, but it is, all the money has not been released to the school districts that need it the most. So I think dealing with the people in Harrisburg to get our funding back on track, that could be a start to financial solvency.
Okay. So I said we were going to talk about infrastructure. So, as you know, the district is comprised of 16 school buildings. Two are high schools, three intermediate schools, and 11 elementary, many of which are aging. I know many of which were around when I was in school. Do our facilities meet the needs of our students in today's world? And what do we need to do? How does all of this impact our financial position?
Well, it's no surprise that we have buildings that are in this area for a while. We've consistently put in place projects to fix sidewalks, roofs, things of that nature. We recently started an energy savings project that will bring back money through energy savings, which can be distributed back into the budget and towards education for the children. Things like that need to continue to happen, and after we do projects to improve our schools, we need to make sure that throughout the years afterwards, we maintain them so that we're not running into these problems and fixing problems that reoccurred eight years prior.
Okay. So, the district is currently working under a five-year strategic plan designed to be in effect through 2020 with four focus areas. Please choose at least one of these and discuss our progress. And the four focus areas, for the folks who don't know, are teaching and learning, leadership development and talent management, systems, process, and resources, and culture. So, out of those, choose at least one. Tell us what we're doing.
With, the superintendent passed, or asked us to pass the strategic plan, and one area that I'm going to focus on is the talent management within our district and promoting from within. We have these positions called school leaders, where we pinpoint employees who do have leadership certs, and we try to promote from within, and we have them in a shadowing process. It's almost like an internship while being on the job and learning how to go about and lead within the building. It's promoting from within, and from not hiring outside the district, I think it could be a cost savings, and it further goes in line with the no layoffs but to fill through attrition mentality. And things like that, it can slowly get costs in line, and it promotes from within.
Okay. So, is there another topic of strategic importance to the district that we haven't covered that you'd like to discuss? You have time to pick another topic.
Something that I think that the district needs to get in line is its purchasing methods and the utilization of services. We need to start sharing our services with the county and the city, and vice versa. Instead of sending trucks to private body shops, why not use the city? They have employees who are mechanics who can do this for no cost at all, all under the taxpayer dollar. And things like that and cooperative purchasing, not just for educational purposes, like has been used in the past, I think it could be a great benefit to the taxpayers in the city of Scranton.
Okay. Robert, that is all of the questions that I have for you, but you've got two minutes for a closing statement. Tell the voters why they should vote for you.
Over the past four years, I've been an independent voice on this school board. I've said yes when it needed to be said, and I've said no when it was necessary and it was the best thing for the district. I don't view myself as a rubber stamp. I will always be open to new suggestions and listening to the taxpayers and employees and the parents of the students of the city of Scranton, and I feel like I have exhibited that over the past four years.
Thank you. So that concludes our interview with Robert Casey. Again, Robert is an incumbent on the Scranton School Board, and he is cross-filled on both the Democratic and Republican tickets. So regardless of whether you are a registered D or a registered R, you'll have an opportunity to vote for him. Again, we are voting for four school directors this time around. There's a total of nine. Five positions will be voted on in the next municipal election two years from now, but right now, you have a choice of up to four. So again, thank you, Robert, for being here. We appreciate your time.
Thank you for having me. Thank you.
We're here now with another one of our candidates running for Scranton School Board. Remember that there are four seats that are open. Barbara Dixon is with us now. Barbara is cross-filled on both the Democratic and the Republican tickets. So Barbara, welcome. Thanks for joining us here today.
Thank you for having me.
So, a little bit about Barbara. She's born in Scranton, graduated from West Scranton High School, earned her Bachelors in Business from Marywood University, and went on to earn her Master's in School Leadership, also from Marywood University. Barbara is a retired teacher and principal. She taught at the secondary level in business, accounting, and technology, and was principal of both Northeast Intermediate School and also South Intermediate School. She has done a tremendous amount of community service, generally as part of the school district as well, and still lives in Scranton. And so we're going to go through, and we have a series of questions to ask you, Barbara, and we'll get started with those right now. So the first question that I have is, school board, and I always say this, our school board members are elected volunteers unpaid for their service for what I know is an extremely important job. What is the role of a school director?
School directors are always representative of the community and advocate for public education. But the primary role is they adopt and maintain policies for the organization and running of the schools. They oversee educational programs. They have a specific responsibility with curriculum, personnel, and they hire a superintendent and they adopt a budget.
Okay. So why should voters elect you? What is your experience or major accomplishments that are relevant? Basically, what distinguishes you from the other candidates? Tell me as a voter, why should I vote for you?
I would vote for me because I am the candidate that has extensive experience in public education, not only in public education, but in Scranton School District. I've worked as a teacher for 18 years, as you said, but more importantly, I think my extensive knowledge in the school district and public education came from my role as a school principal. At that level, I had to do everything basically on a smaller scope, in a building scope, where I had to oversee the property of the building, I had to oversee personnel, I was the gatekeeper for the curriculum, I was responsible for school discipline. I know the students that Scranton School District services, I know what our needs are, and I know the operational activities that make the school district work or don't work.
Okay. So Barbara, by all accounts, the district is facing serious financial issues. Please share your knowledge of the issues and how you think they can be solved. And I just want to say that my next question is going to focus on the infrastructure. So let's focus on things that are not infrastructure related to the finances of the district.
So we're focusing on the debt right now that we have.
Whatever you say are financial issues for the city or for the district.
Well, our biggest issue is the lack of state funding that has caused many districts, not only Scranton, to go into an extensive deficit. As far as our deficit goes, I am not privy at this time to know how much of it is current and how much of it is long-term. Trying to make the difficult decisions is going to be the task of the next board going forward to bring our district into financial solvency again. One of the things I think we need to do is come up with a policy or a long-range plan to look forward into the future for further cuts or things that go on that would cause us to have to knee-jerk because of lack of funding. I think we need to work closely with our state legislators, because that's where it's coming from. The money's not coming from the state. So we have to align our revenues and expenses.
Okay. So talking about infrastructure now, and you were into those buildings. The district is comprised of 16 school buildings, two high schools, three intermediate, and 11 elementary, many of which are aging, and I'll date myself and say I was in many of those buildings as a student. Do our facilities meet the needs of our students in today's world, and how does it impact on our financial position?
I know there's constantly improvements being made to the schools. I can speak for the secondary level. I was at South and I was at Northeast Intermediate, and I feel that they meet the needs to our school. I taught at West Intermediate. I think the district does a great job in trying to keep our facilities up to par for our students. As far as the elementary schools, I know we have TRIP that was built after I had retired, and I know there's constant improvement being made, but it is an impact. It's a large district.
Okay. So the district is currently working under a five-year strategic plan designed to be in effect through 2020 with four focus areas. I'd like you to choose at least one of the focus areas and discuss what you believe our progress is. So the four areas are teaching and learning, leadership development and talent management, systems, process, and resources, and culture. So how is the district doing toward any of those?
I think they're making progress in all four of those. I think we need to really invest, from being in the seat, I think we really need to invest in our school principals, in training them, further training them, in keeping a close hand on different points that we want them to carry out, because they're really the ones that have the pulse on each of the buildings, and then they answer to central administration. We need to extensively keep them updated on different initiatives at the state level, different initiatives for the educational arena, and different changes that are coming from the state level.
Okay. Barbara, is there another topic, excuse me, of strategic importance to the district that we haven't covered that you'd like to discuss?
What were the four again that you told me?
Teaching and learning, leadership development and talent management, systems, process, and resources, and culture. Any of those or anything else that we haven't talked about that's of strategic importance to the district that you would like to cover?
I think my focus would be the teaching and learning as a board member. I think we have changes coming down in education from the Pennsylvania initiatives. I think aligning our curriculum with the current job market that's out there, instead of the cookie-cutter curriculum that we have, I think that's the biggest task that the school district's going to face.
Okay. Barbara, those were all the questions that I have for you, but you have two minutes for a closing statement. You can let the voters know why they should choose you.
I not only am a homeowner and a taxpayer in Scranton School District, but I don't believe that qualifies me just to run for the school board. I have a vested interest in over 30 years in public education, particularly in Scranton School District. While I was a principal, I underwent extensive training comparing our curriculum in Scranton to other cities, states, and even world curriculums. I think we're going to be moving forward in different initiatives to carry our school district and prepare our kids for the next century coming, because there's a lot of changes in the job market, especially in the technology. I strongly support literacy and that STEM education that is coming up on the horizon. I don't think that the position that the school district is in right now is a place to be a training ground. I can hit the ground running. I know the problems, and I have the knowledge to help solve those problems and work with central administration and to move us forward. I appreciate you having me here today, and I humbly ask for your vote. I'm running on both Democratic ticket and the Republican ticket. The Democratic ticket, I'm number seven, and the Republican ticket is number five. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That concludes our time with Barbara Dixon. Again, as she said, she is cross-filled on both the Democratic and Republican tickets. And again, just so that we all remember, we're voting for four of our candidates. There are 10 on the Democratic ticket and seven on the Republican ticket. So we're voting for four school directors. There's a total of nine who serve, so we are voting for four this time around. And Barbara, once again, thank you so much for coming in to talk with us today.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
The next candidate joining us today is Katie Gilmarten. Katie, welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me.
So Katie is another candidate who is cross-filled on both the Democratic and the Republican tickets. And as I keep saying, we're voting for four. There are 10 candidates, 10 on the Democratic ticket, and seven of those who are cross-filled for the Republican ticket as well. So a little bit about Katie. Born in Carbondale, but I understand born in Carbondale, then moved to the Abingtons.
Only spent the time in the hospital in Carbondale. I like to give them their due. It's a good city.
And Katie's business, NADA and Company, moved to Scranton in 2007, and Katie moved to Scranton permanently for herself in 2009. But you spent a lot of time in Scranton growing up, because you're also a graduate of Scranton Prep, and went on to Fordham, where you earned your Bachelor's in Theater Production. And you worked in New York City for a while as well, and since I was impressed by this, worked on Law &amp; Order, SVU.
It's a good claim to feign, that's for sure. It's a wonderful experience.
So as I said, Katie and her family own NADA and Company. She's a partner in the business on Capous Avenue in Scranton, but Katie has a significant list of civic experience that all run through some of these. So she's on the board of the Scranton Area Foundation, serving as part of the Women in Philanthropy Group as well, is the chairman of the Board of the Scranton Shakespeare Festival. Her family, I know, is involved in the Society for the Preservation of the TRIP Family Homestead, and Katie is the publicity chairman. She's a member of the Historical Architectural Review Board, past president and sustaining member of the Junior League of Scranton, and ambassador for Broadway Theater, and also on the Advisory Council for the Ballet Theater of Scranton. So quite a busy thing, a lot of things that you're involved in. So you want to be involved in the school board as well now.
Yes, sort of moments of free time, so why not?
So my first question for you, and I say this to everybody, that school board members are elected volunteers. They are unpaid for their service, but as we know, as I know, this is an extremely important job. Tell me, what is the role of a school director?
Well, the role of the school director is certainly to make policy, to maintain policy, to administer policy. But I think also the role of a school director is to be an ambassador, to be informed about what goes on in the district, to make sure that the community is aware of the wonderful accomplishments of our students and educators. And I think it's to, I actually read something that referred to a school board member as an educational watchdog, which I thought was a great way of putting it. You're not there to interfere or micromanage, and yet you are there to support and perhaps raise an issue when you see one coming your way.
Okay. So Katie, why should voters elect you? What is your experience or major accomplishments that are relevant? Tell me what distinguishes you from the other candidates. Why should I, as a voter, vote for you?
Well, Andrea, I think my vast experience as a volunteer is certainly my greatest asset. And while so many of the other candidates are also wonderful members of our community, this has been, I have enjoyed a lifetime of service. My parents, NADA and Michael Gilmarten, as you know, are active community volunteers and board members and advocates and schleppers and everything you can possibly be. So to have had them as an example of community service is about as good as you can get. And certainly my business experience. I'm not afraid to make difficult decisions, to weigh the pros and cons of a situation, and keep budgetary constraints in mind, and yet, we don't run a bottom-line business, and the school district can't be one either. Difficult financial decisions are imperative, and yet, maintaining the standards of education has to be paramount.
Okay. So Katie, by all accounts, the district is facing serious financial issues. Share your knowledge of the issues and how you think they can be solved. And I just want to say that the next question is going to focus on infrastructure. So let's talk now about things that are not pertaining to the infrastructure of the school district.
Okay. I mean, certainly, my knowledge of the financial situation grows each and every day. I am learning and learning and learning. It seems as though many of the things that are a challenge are, to me, very much common sense. Obviously, a bidding policy, being so careful about the way every dollar is spent, and making fair and reasonable decisions, and making sure that nepotism and cronyism and favors and backroom deals don't enter into any of it. That simply can't be a factor.
Okay. So the district is comprised of 16 school buildings. Two are high schools, three intermediate, and 11 elementary, many of which are aging, and I continue to date myself and say, and I know because I went to school in them. Do our facilities meet the needs of our students in today's world, and how does this impact on our financial position?
Well, I am ashamed to say I have not been in each and every building yet. I have been in touch with the principals and am trying to get that scheduled, but that does seem to be a recurring theme, that safety is an issue, that the condition of the buildings is an issue. I am aware of the Constellation Energy Project, and it seems as though some of those plans are promising and will have a good impact on that. Again, the pros and cons of entering into a situation like that, a contract, can be weighed heavily. But I think it is so important that the school buildings are safe and up to current standards, and that the technological piece of all of this is also coming into play. And again, I think that's one of those bottom-line decisions. We have to be so financially responsible, and yet, there are needs that must be addressed for safety and to make sure that the students and the educators have the resources they need.
Okay. So the district is currently working under a five-year strategic plan that's designed to be in effect through 2020 with four focus areas. Please choose at least one of those focus areas and discuss what you believe the district's progress is. So in those four areas are teaching and learning, leadership development and talent management, systems, process, and resources, and also culture.
Well, I think culture is probably the one that has been a recurring topic in a lot of conversations I've had the pleasure of having in the last few weeks, and it is such an asset to our district. I believe, I hear a few different numbers, but it's around 40, 36, 39. The exact number seems to change. Languages that are spoken in the district. And I think as we have new groups entering our community and becoming a part of our neighborhoods, the schools are a hub for that, and we have such an opportunity to engage new citizens and learn about their cultures, teach them about ours, and really bring them in through their children. And I think it's, I am sure that it's a work in progress and an area where improvements can always be made, but it just, it seems so exciting. There's so much potential, and that's something I love to see.
Great. So Katie, is there another topic of strategic importance to the district that we haven't covered that you'd like to discuss? Whatever you think is most important to the district.
It permeates many of them, but I think transparency is most important to the district, and that has financial ramifications, that has educational ramifications. But I think feeling as though, I think it's important that all of the interested parties feel as though they have been heard, feel as though they have been represented, feel as though their perspective has been part of the discussion. I think that's, and transparency may not always, those things may not always define transparency, but I think that has to be your goal, and I think that comes from communication. And feeling as though the public has time to digest changes, to understand them, and to feel assured the great deal of thought and research when in and research went into them. I think that's the most important part of this, of course, beyond the financial piece, because that sort of supersedes everything. That's the reality of it. But to make sure that there is, God bless you, to make sure that the public is informed and knowledgeable and feels a part of what's going on, I think, is vital.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I was trying to keep going to give you a second there.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And I apologize. Getting over a cold. And it just hangs on and on.
I know, I know.
I'm actually done with my questions.
Well, okay.
So Mark can turn off my microphone. And you have two minutes for a closing statement. Let the voters know why they should choose you.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrea. I applaud the League of Women Voters and their tremendous efforts in informing the public about their choices in this election. And of course, Andrea and her family are such devoted community advocates as well, and I certainly appreciate that. I would very much appreciate your support on May 16th. As Andrea said, I am cross filed, number one on the Democratic ballot, number four on the Republican. And I simply want to work hard. I think there are innumerable challenges facing the district. But sometimes, when that's the case, it's your best chance to move forward and have everyone come together, build a team, make wise and reasonable and well-thought-out decisions. And that is something I am more than willing to do. Certainly, as I said before, my business and my volunteer experience gives me a wide reach. And I have, I'm a free agent, which is wonderful. I have nothing to lose in this process. And yet, because of my involvement in this community for my entire life, I have wonderful advisors. And I have wonderful people who listen to me, who share their insights, who give me great ideas and feedback. And that, I think, is my biggest asset coming into this position, hopefully, coming into this position. And they are people that I can continue to call on. And I feel very, very lucky to have that. So I appreciate your support, and thank you, Andrea, for this opportunity.
That concludes our time with Katie Gilmarten. Again, Katie is cross filed on both the Democratic and the Republican tickets. You will vote for four school directors in this particular election. There's a total of nine who serve us in the city of Scranton, but four of them will be elected this go around. So again, Katie, thank you for spending time with us today. And we'll see you out on the campaign trail, I'm sure.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Our next candidate is Joe Madyevich, Joseph Madyevich. And Joe is on the Democratic ticket for Scranton School Director. So Joe, thank you for being here with us today.
Thank you for having me.
So a little bit about Joe. He's born and raised in Scranton, graduated from West Scranton High School, and went on and earned his bachelor's in computer science at the University of Scranton. He has run for office before, but has not served in office. So you ran for city council and also for school board. And you work at Sanofi as an ITS business partner, so working in the computer world.
Thank you.
And your civic experience, you are the coordinator and vice president of the Tripp Park Civic Association. You're part of the Sons of the American Legion, St. Patrick's Parish Community, treasurer of the West Scranton Black Sheep, and also a member of the Ancient Order of Iberians.
Well-rounded civic organizations.
Okay. So the first thing that I want to talk about, and you know this, school board members are elected volunteers. They're unpaid, that's what I always call them, unpaid for their service, for what is an extremely important job. Tell us, what is the role of a school director?
The role of the school director is to set the policy. As a policymaker and a policy setter, we are elected by the people to serve, as you said, with no pay, to set the policy for the Scranton School District, so that we, in turn, can hire capable administrators to execute that policy. So I believe that, as having to do that in my life, to set policies for how I'm going to live my life and run my family and manage my life and at work, that I can set the policy for the district. And basically, I can, you know, ensure that the policy gets put into place. It's put the plan in place and then make sure that the plan gets executed.
Okay. So tell us now, why should voters elect you? What's your specific experience or major accomplishments that are relevant? What distinguishes you from the other candidates? Why should I vote for you?
Basically, as a lifelong resident of Scranton, honors graduate of West Scranton High School, a graduate of the University of Scranton, working for the largest vaccine manufacturer in the world, I believe that my life experience, my educational experience, and my love for this community, and my willingness to give back, and my leadership skills that I have at work, makes me the best candidate for this job. You know, anybody in the city of Scranton that gets 100 signatures can get on the ballot. Basically, the qualifications are what you make of them and what you actually want to do when you're elected. Going on that school board, it's like being a member of a baseball team. There's actually nine players. You know, each person on that board has a role, a pitcher, a catcher, a right fielder, a shortstop. You know, our job, unlike, is to hire the administrators to run the team, to run the team of employees and the buildings that we have in place. So I believe that my life experience, my work experience, my passion for the community, and my desire to get there and to show that if the people put their trust in me, you know, I'm the right candidate for that job. They have a chance to vote for four. If I'm one of their four, I'll be greatly appreciative, and I'll do the best, and I won't let them down, and I'll be open and transparent.
Okay. So Joe, by all accounts, the district is facing serious financial issues. Please share your knowledge of the issues and how you think they can be solved. And I just want to say, the next question will focus on infrastructure. So let's talk about financial issues that don't pertain to the infrastructure of the district.
So basically, from what I've heard, what I've read, there's a major deficit. Basically, I consider that a hole. Two years ago, it was a 12-foot hole. From what I hear today, there's a 42-foot hole. So basically, we need to fill that hole. And in order to fill that hole, we need to actually look for ways to expand the tax base. We need to ensure that we get the best bang for our buck from our other elected officials. We go to Washington, we go to Harrisburg, we ensure that that money comes back in here. We look of ways to partnership, agility programs with other government entities. We look to do shared purchasing. I believe those are some of the ways that we can actually, you know, fill this gap that we have, because if we don't, this is the last chance that we get to save the district. Because if we don't do it now, there's not going to be a school board that is going to be able to do it. Because the fear is that the state will come in, and they will start filling that hole. And that hole will be filmed on the backs of the employees, the students, you know, and the taxpayers. So we've got one last shot to fill that. Working together, cooperation, partnering with other organizations, better purchasing, bidding out, you know, contracts to save money. A dollar saved is a dollar that goes back into that hole that we don't need to go through and ask the taxpayers for any more money. So that's where I'll start, you know, once elected.
Okay. So talking about infrastructure, the district is comprised of 16 school buildings. Two are high schools, three are intermediate, 11 elementary, many of which are aging. I'll say that I was a student in some of those buildings. Do our facilities meet the needs of our students in today's world? And how does it impact on our financial position?
I believe, as you said, our buildings are old. We have some new buildings, some buildings that have been recently, you know, upgraded. They need a lot of TLC. I believe that the district has just signed an agreement to do some infrastructure energy savings. I'm not sure if that's the end-all, be-all, because at the end of that, they're looking to pay $22,000 to see if that money is being saved. I believe we have capable administrators to do that. So that's an extra $22,000 that can go into our buildings. We need to work closely with our maintenance workers and our clerical workers and our teachers that are in the buildings every day. Bring them together. What do we need to do to do to the buildings, to bring them, you know, up to where they need to be? Some of the older buildings, as you said, need major overhauls. We're not in a position that we can actually build a new building. You know, they're in the neighborhoods, they need to stay in the neighborhoods. But working together with the employees that are in the buildings every day and cooperation, seeking whatever grants that we get, I believe that that will allow us to bring money home or save money to put into the buildings, to put into the equipment, to put into the technology, to allow our students, you know, to foster and to give our employees, you know, facilities that basically, they will feel like home, that when they want to go there. Because remember, it is their home for 180 days out of the year. They're there from September, you know, to June. And I think that we can bring them, make them better without putting a burden on the taxpayers, if we do things, you know, work smarter, not harder.
Okay. So Joe, the district is currently working under a five-year strategic plan that's designed to be in effect through 2020 with four focus areas. So I'd like you to choose at least one of the focus areas and discuss what you believe our progress is. And for those who don't know, the four focus areas are teaching and learning, leadership development and talent management, systems, process and resources, and culture.
I believe it will tackle the teaching and learning. You know, as a product of the Scranton School District, you know, my wife went to the Scranton School District, my daughter, we're all graduates of Scranton School District. They do, we do provide the best education possible with the tools that we have at hand, you know, for our students. Things have gotten better. They've gotten upgraded facilities, and some of those, we just previously talked about, our books and on our supplies, we're getting better with them. We're not using outdated technology. I believe without being a member of the school board today, without being able to go into the buildings, to sit down and talk to the administrators and the teachers, to see, you know, what they need, you know, we try our best, you know, to give them what they need. The taxpayers want to see that. And as a member of the board, if elected, you know, I'd gladly sit down with them, look at what are the other tools that they need to do their job? How do we make things better? Where are things good? Where are things not good? What do we leave alone? What do we need to leapfrog and actually, you know, go above and beyond? And I think that's the area that I'd be, you know, greatly focused on, because I have some interest in the district as one of my nieces who's, you know, five years old, just in kindergarten. I made a promise that she'll get the best education possible, and I'll do everything in my power to expand those areas to ensure that she does.
Okay. Joe, is there another topic of strategic importance to the district that we haven't covered that you'd like to discuss? Anything that you feel is the most important to the district?
I believe, as I said before, cooperation. You know, cooperation and openness. If we are open with our people, when I mean people, it's the employees, the parents, the students, and most of all, the taxpayers. If we're transparent with them, and then we have cooperative initiatives, that will take us a long way. Because at the end of the day, you don't need to pay for everything. You know, you have joint initiatives, you have ideas from outside individuals, and coming together can make things better. And I think that a better school, a better school today provides a better tomorrow for the entire community. You know, I can make the right and hard decisions. I can get people involved as a community member, community activist, involved in many organizations. I do that today. And I think that that's a sense of cooperation that I can initiate. And I think that people will be responsive to that, and they will be part of the process. And if we make them feel like it's their process, because remember, they are the owners of the buildings. They are the ones who actually go through and pay for the upkeep, pay for the employees, pay to, you know, keep things looking good and running like a well-oiled machine. So I think the cooperation, give them a part of it, not just every two years at the ballot box, and when they write their tax check, you know, every year for their property taxes, you know, have a sense of involvement. And I think those are two other items that need to be looked at.
Okay. Joe, that ends the questions that I have for you. But you have two minutes for a closing statement to let the voters know why they should choose you.
Well, thank you very much for having me. Once again, I'm Joe Madyevich, lifelong resident of Scranton, Pennsylvania, graduate of West Scranton High School, an honors graduate in 1983, graduate of the University of Scranton, married to the former Laura Realstone, have one daughter, Morgan Anne. We are all products of the Scranton School District. We live in this community. We've chose this community to be our home. I'm not leaving. My wife isn't leaving. Basically, I'm asking the voters of Scranton to elect me to one of those seats open for the Scranton School Board. I believe through my life experience, my education, my work background, an individual who can be independent, who can make the right and hard decisions to move this district forward are some of the key capabilities that I will bring, you know, to that board. As I said earlier, it's a baseball team, nine members on there. Each one has different skill sets, each has different views. Coming together, we can make things happen. We need to close the deficit that we have. We need to stop the state from coming in. We need to work together with other government agencies. And I'll be the director that will do that. I will work with you. My door is open, my phone is there, email. If you call me and have an issue, I will ensure that I do everything in my power to make your voice be heard, so that you, as the taxpayers of Scranton, parents of children in the district, and employees of the Scranton School District, get what you pay for when you write your, when you get hit with that tax bill every year. And once again, I ask you for your vote on May the 16th to make me be one of the four people that you elect for Scranton School District. And thank you very much. And thank you for having me here today. Greatly appreciate it.
That concludes our time with Joseph Madyevich. You'll find him on the Democratic ticket. Again, there are 10 candidates who are running, and as Joe said, you will vote for four of them. So once again, Joe, thanks so much for being here with us today.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate it.
Our next candidate is Mark McAndrew. Mark is cross filed on both the Democratic and Republican tickets. So Mark, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Andrea. It's a great pleasure to be here today.
And Mark is also an incumbent. He is serving his first term, so running for reelection this time around. So a little bit of background on Mark. Born and raised in Scranton, a graduate of West Scranton High School, and earned his degree in culinary arts from the Culinary Institute of America, and has gone on for additional certification from Temple University. He is currently the culinary arts instructor at the Career Technology Center of Lackawanna County, and adjunct culinary and pastry arts instructor at Luzerne County Community College. Mark is also the chairman for food services for the Scranton School Board. That's appropriate.
Yes.
And his civic experience, Mark is a volunteer for the Friends of the Poor Dinners. He's the chairman of the Cookies for Kids Cancer Bake Sales, which provides funding for pediatric cancer research. He's a member of the Black Sheep of West Scranton, and does a dog biscuit project for Griffin Pond Animal Shelter. So again, Mark, thank you for taking the time to be here with us today.
Thank you.
Our first question, as you well know, and I always say this, school board members are elected volunteers, unpaid for their service. So tell us, we know this is an extremely important job, what is the role of a school director?
Basically, the role is to develop and set policy for the district, and amend them policies when they need to be amended.
Okay. So why should voters elect you? What's your experience, major accomplishments that are relevant? What distinguishes you from the other candidates? Why should I vote for you?
Well, first of all, I'm an educator, so I have the great pleasure of having students in front of me every day, understanding their needs and interests and the desire to achieve. With that said, I mean, I'm part of that success process, and I like to think that I can contribute at a higher level, being on the board, to the success of students.
Okay. So Mark, by all accounts, the district is facing serious financial issues. Please share your knowledge of the issues and how you think they can be solved. And I will say that my next question will pertain to infrastructure. So let's talk about things other than infrastructure at this point.
Okay. Well, you know, we have a $30,000 deficit. Some of the issues are, because of that, are unfunded and partially funded mandates that come down from the state. So that's a struggle. That drains our budget. Another issue is, we have to follow a strict bidding schedule. We have to reduce spending without sacrificing the quality of education.
Okay. So as you know, the district is comprised of 16 school buildings, two high schools, three intermediate, 11 elementary, many of which are aging, and I know because I went to school in some of them. Do our facilities meet the needs of our students in today's world? And how does it impact on our financial position?
Well, I believe that our facilities do meet the needs, educational needs of our students. I mean, there's constant upgrades that need to be done with regard to state of technology, because, you know, that's, there's a movement toward that with STEAM and STEM projects. I said, we received some PlanCon money that was held and STEM projects. I said, we received some PlanCon money that was held back or we're going to receive it, but maintaining the, the buildings is a struggle. We have to look at ways and maybe reach out for some more grants to provide some of that relief for this situation.
Okay. So the district is currently working under a five-year strategic plan that's designed to be in effect through 2020 with four focus areas. Please choose at least one of these to discuss our progress. And the four focus areas are teaching and learning, leadership development and talent management, systems, process and resources, and culture.
Well, teaching and learning is an area that I think is, you know, the most important because first of all, we're in the, we're in the kid business and we're in the teaching business or the education business. So I think we, with the diverse population we have, I think we need to look at some other frameworks that are out there that are coming down the pike with regards to universal design for learning, which focuses on curriculum based on research. And also after that, you know, providing differentiated instruction on every level throughout the district would help us with that.
Okay. So Mark, is there another topic of strategic importance to the district that we haven't covered that you'd like to discuss? What do you think is the most important thing?
Well, outside of the, you know, becoming more fiscally responsible, I think we need to look at more ways to reduce spending. I know I mentioned a bidding schedule earlier, but we need to reduce spending and find ways to do better purchasing with regards to, you know, maybe doing better inventories so we can reduce spending. That's a main issue of mine.
Okay. Those were all the questions that I have for you, but you actually have two minutes and you can tell the voters why they should choose you.
Well, once again, I'm an educator. I have a great understanding of what goes on in daily, you know, daily operations of schools in the classroom. I like to contribute at a higher level through that process as a board member. I'm seeking reelection. This is my second term. I think I've demonstrated in my first term that I'm not afraid to speak up and for the public, for the students, and the stakeholders of this city. So on May 16th, I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
So that concludes our time with Mark McAndrew. Again, Mark is an incumbent school board member, and he is cross-filled on both the Democratic and Republican tickets. And we will be voting for four out of 10 total candidates on the Democratic ticket, seven of them on the Republican ticket for this time around. We'll seat four of our nine school board directors. So again, excuse me, Mark, thank you for being here today.
Thank you very much.
So we're here right now, kind of, sort of, with Chris Phillips. Chris is actually on the phone. He is out of town today, but wanted, felt very strongly about having this interview. And we made arrangements for the very first time to do a phone interview with him. So you'll hear Chris on the phone and you'll see his photo when he's speaking from my laptop. So Chris, thank you for doing this today. We appreciate your commitment to talking to us.
Andrea, thank you so much for doing it and I appreciate the opportunity.
So to let the voters know a little bit more about Chris, he was born in Washington, DC, but has lived in the city of Scranton for 50 years. He graduated from Bishop Hanan High School and graduated with his associates from Lackawanna College in Business Administration, went on to earn his bachelor's degree from Penn State University, also in business. And he is a former Scranton School Board member, having served from 2007 to 2011. When Chris was on the school board, he served on various committees, including budget finance, personnel, health and safety, building and grounds, and also served as the Career Technology Center liaison. In his professional life, he is the Regional Distribution Center Manager of Asset Protection Safety at Home Depot. And in his civic life as well, he has served in the past as the president of Whittier PTA and currently is part of the Manuka Lions Club and also the Manuka Babe Ruth League. So having said all of that, let's get started. Chris, the first question for you, school board members, as you know, are elected volunteers unpaid for their service, but for an extremely important job. Tell the voters, what is the role of a school director?
Well, the school directors by, by rule are supposed to set, set a policy and implement that policy through administrators. And the way I see it, we need to, we need to support the administration in executing the policy that we put in place. And then we need to basically take a hands-off approach and let them manage because they're the professionals. We pay them large sums of money and that's what they should be doing.
Okay. So Chris, why should voters elect you? What's your experience or major accomplishments that are relevant? What distinguishes you from the other candidates? Tell me why I should vote for you.
Well, first off, because I have experience as a director from 2007 to 2011. That in itself is not as significant as the fact that during that timeframe, we were able to implement budgets that worked. We were able to stay within the state cap for any, any tax increases that we did imply or did impose. And the other piece, most significantly, is that the last year that the school board had a ending year surplus was 2011, which was my last year on the board. And since that time, we've had nothing but deficits and now we're up to as much as $33 million, you know, projected deficit, which is unacceptable. And every year that I was there, we ended, we ended with a surplus. And that was something that, as a director, when I first went in in 2007, we met with Mr. Sunday, our business manager, and Mr. Sunday, you know, stressed the importance of ending each year with a surplus. And we worked towards that every single year that I was on the board. And that seems to be sorely missing over the last six years. And as a parent with children in the district, it scares me. As a taxpayer, it frightens me. I see the board borrowing money to, you know, instead of raising taxes, they're borrowing money. So basically what they're doing is they're kicking it down the road to other boards and other people, frankly, people that have more convictions than they do. And we need to, we need to change that.
Okay. So Chris, you've been talking about actually what my next question is. So as, by all accounts, the district is facing serious financial issues. Share your knowledge of the issues and how you think they can be solved. And I'll just say that my next question will focus on infrastructure. So let's talk about things that pertain to the financial issues other than infrastructure.
Sure. Well, I mean, first off, it's not a, it's not a single bullet fix. It's, it's something that you need to, you need to do a series of things over a period of years to get to where you were. For example, in 2007, we were already projecting where we would be in 2011 and working towards that as a long-term goal. Right now, I mean, how you can do the things, there seems to be no planning going on right now. I'll give you an example. This past fall, they changed the special ed program that they run in the district. It was supposed to be a cost-neutral plan. The estimates that I'm hearing from people within the district is that it's going to cost anywhere between $3 and $4 million at this point. They hired 32 people as a part of that initiative, and this was four months before it became known that they had a $30 million ending year deficit. How you can make that decision is beyond me. I think there's a lack of planning. I think that you need to sit down with the business manager, you need to formulate your plan, then you need to follow the plan. Unfortunately, with the conditions that the district is in now, you may need to do more as far as planning. You may, you may need to do something like the city has done, for example. The city brought in Mr. Amaroso, who's a specialist for municipal governments. Maybe we need to do something like that with the school district. Bring someone in, formulate a plan, and then we have to execute that plan without deviation.
Okay. So as you know, the district is comprised of 16 school buildings, two high schools, three intermediate, 11 elementary, many of which are aging. As I've said before to other candidates, I attended school in some of those. Do our facilities meet the needs of our students in today's world? And how does it impact on our financial position?
Well, I'll tell you what, you really, you really struck a nerve on one, one part of that question because as a director from 2007 to 2011, I was part of a group of directors that implemented a $60 million building project and we built three schools. And in those schools, we made sure that, and I was a part of the planning committees on these when we, when we set them up. We made sure we had music rooms, we made sure we had libraries, we made sure we had technology rooms. And then in the last several years, all those rooms have been taken out and things have been rearranged because of space constraints and things that we did like closing Audubon Elementary School after we dumped millions of dollars into it. The current situation of the district, I don't believe it meets the needs of the students. I think there are certainly other things that you need to do. That being said, I don't know how you do them with the financial condition of the district yet. We need to look at, at state grants, we need to look at federal grants, we need to look at programs, we need to look at any means possible to make sure that we're providing sufficient facilities, not only for our students, but for our staff as well. And again, I have experience doing that. We did it when I was there from 2007 to 2011.
Okay. The district is currently working under a five-year strategic plan designed to be in effect through 2020 with four focus areas. Please choose at least one of these and discuss what you believe is the, the district's progress. And those four areas were teaching and learning, leadership development and talent management, systems, process and resources, and the fourth is culture.
Wow. Well, that's quite a, quite a handful to choose from. I mean, I could probably speak at length about each one of them. I, I think what I'll choose is culture. When, when I was a director, there was a feeling of pride in the district. There was a feeling of pride on the part of administrators. There was a feeling of pride on the part of teachers. There was a feeling of pride on the part of maintenance workers. There was a feeling of pride on the part of cafeterias. What I, what I gather now from the time that I've spent in schools, my own children, reading the paper, people are deflated. The culture is suffering. When the culture suffers, the, the students will not learn in the same manner they would if they were learning in engaged environments. I would, I would like to see focus on the culture. I would like to see changes made where people are actually supporting leaders and teachers and making sure that they are, they're having all the roadblocks that they encounter removed. We need to, we need to work through a position of servant leadership that starts with the board, the superintendent, the principals, and then the teachers finally serving the students.
Okay. Chris, is there another topic of strategic importance to the district that we haven't covered that you'd like to discuss?
Sure. How about bidding? Bidding is something of basically any allowable service or contract. It's something that's cost the district millions of dollars by not doing. It's also something that when I was in the board, I advocated for, in some cases, I was successful in getting enough people to go along with me to do it. One such instance was the banking contract where it hadn't been put out to bid for years. We finally got five directors that would do it and we did it. And we wound up saving millions of dollars. And, you know, we have issues now like the busing contract that has not been put out to bid. And frankly, those were things that I couldn't even get people to go along with when I was on the board. So I know how difficult it is. What people need to realize is that this election needs to ensure that there's a change in the majority of the board. You know, it, it has to change because if it doesn't change, the direction of the district is not going to change.
Okay. Chris, that's the end of the questions that I have for you. So feel free to give your closing statement.
Thank you, Andrea. And again, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to do this. I appreciate making arrangements for, you know, I couldn't be in town today and it's, I'm grateful. This election, as I just mentioned, is critically important in the city of Scranton, the school district of Scranton, because it's, it's going to impact the area, not just the district. It's going to impact the area for years to come. If the district winds up being taken over by the state and has the stigma of being basically a distressed school district that the city has been for so many years, it could cripple the entire area. I urge voters, just get out and vote. I mean, we had a 70% turnout for a presidential election this past fall, and we need that kind of turnout right now in, in the spring for the school district election because we have to have change. It's not too late. The district can be saved, but if people don't get out and vote, they're going to have no one to blame but themselves in, in a couple of months or a couple of years, whatever the case may be. I have experience. I'm qualified. I've demonstrated that as a director from 2007 to 2011. I will debate any issue anywhere with anyone. I will stand on my record and I want nothing but the district to be better. I'm going to have children in the district for another 14 years and I'm committed to it. And, you know, I love my city and I, I love where we are in my home and I don't want to move. I want to stay here. I want to stand up. I want to make the district a better place.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes our phone interview with Chris Phillips, who was unable to be in the city for the interview today. I want to remind the voters that Chris is cross-filled and will appear on both the Democratic and the Republican tickets. We are electing four out of our nine school directors this time around. And again, Chris will show up on both of those tickets. So Chris, thanks again for taking the time. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Andrea. I'm going to go enjoy School of Rock right now.
All right. Have a good time. Bye-bye.
You too. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Our next candidate is Chantel Rich. Chantel is on the Democratic ticket for Scranton School Director. So Chantel, welcome. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you for having me.
So Chantel was actually, just to give you a little bit of information on her, is from Connecticut originally, moved to Scranton in 2011 because her husband is a faculty member at Marywood University. So they moved to Scranton and has, have become active members of the community. So she graduated obviously from high school in Connecticut, has earned a bachelor's from the University of Maine in Fine Arts and American Studies, and is just about ready to graduate with her master's of social work from Marywood University. So congratulations on that wonderful accomplishment.
Thank you.
And civic experience. So Chantel was formerly part of Action Together Northeastern Pennsylvania. She serves as a volunteer teacher, teaching English to refugees through the Catholic Social Services and is a member of Progressive Women of Northeastern Pennsylvania. So right now, she's a college student and a stay-at-home mom, but soon to be out looking in the workforce as well. And now also looking to serve as a Scranton School Director. So Chantel, the first question that I have for you is, school board members are what I always call elected volunteers unpaid for their service for what is an extremely important job. What is the role of a school director?
In my eyes, I see the school director as being like a gatekeeper, I guess, for quality of public education because they're involved in the hiring and contracts and pretty much everything that top-down. So I think that for the school board has to be responsible and for ensuring that the children get a quality of public education. Because I went to public school myself, so I'm a big fan of public schools. My children attend public school here in the city and they, we've been really lucky that they've had wonderful teachers. But I like to think that maybe all the teachers are just as wonderful for other families. But I think that it's the school board's, part of their mission is to ensure that they, kids get that quality education despite budget shortfalls or what have you in the area.
Okay. So why should voters elect you? What's your experience or accomplishments that are relevant? What distinguishes you from the other candidates? Tell me why I should vote for you.
Well, I think a lot of times, I don't want to knock Scranton. I love Scranton. Like, I absolutely love Scranton. But I think a lot of times, it's so like, you know that you have name recognition and it's all the same families that tend to run for everything and get elected. And I think having a newer person who isn't from the area, but I've been here a while. I mean, we bought a house here. We're, we're not moving. It would could maybe change things up a little because I think that whatever's going on in the board now, it needs to change. And maybe having someone from outside the area like myself would, could implement some sort of changes to the board.
Okay. So by all accounts, the district is facing some serious financial issues. So please share your knowledge of the issues and how you think they can be solved. And I just want to say that the next question will talk about infrastructure. So let's talk about things other than infrastructure now.
Okay. One of the ideas I had for the budget shortfalls, I think the school board's going to need to get creative because obviously what they've been doing, like the old ways haven't been working. So I've been actually, since I decided to run for school board, I've been looking up like what other districts have done to like minimize their budget shortfalls. And there's been a lot of, like, some schools have started community, like gardens on their campus, like, whatever, like their, their yards, I guess. I don't know what to call it. It's on, I guess, campus, to have organic vegetables for the kids to minimize the food costs. I mean, it would take a bit to start it up, but once it gets going, it's something that would keep getting renewed. Or I thought, I thought that was a really great idea because I remember during the strike, the teachers were paying out of their pockets for some school lunches for kids. And that would be one way to stop that as well. Like, they could have food for the summer, like vegetables and stuff, healthy foods. I also think that another interesting thing was charging a little bit more for attendance to events for school, like football games or baseball games. Not even a lot more. I think like a dollar more would make a huge difference because they're so well-attended. And I mean, I just think the more creative ways you can get to, to doing it would be better. I mean, obviously, like trying to look at contracts and like renegotiating what what's there, um, to try to change things would be good too, I mean, I have like a ton of ideas, but obviously we don't have all day.
Okay. Um, so the district is comprised of 16 school buildings, so we'll talk about infrastructure a little, two high schools, three intermediate, 11 elementary, many of which are aging, I'm sure people are sick of me hearing this, but I went to school in several of those buildings. Um, do our facilities meet the needs of our students in today's world, and how does it impact our financial position?
It definitely impacts the financial position. Um, my kids, my kids are at Whittier, which I think has been updated recently from what I was told, um, but I know that other schools in the area, like, we have friends who have kids in other schools, where they're taking over the music class for classrooms, like, not music, but like general ed classes, so clearly, like, some of the buildings are just not meeting the needs, there's too many students or what have you, and I, I think if you're update, you can't update all of the buildings at once, then the budget would, shortfall would be even like greater, but I think that if you could do like a little bit each year would be, would be better than nothing. I mean, you have to fix the building so that like the one, didn't one of them have like a leak recently, like last year, like, that kind of thing, if you take care of that beforehand, even if it will cost a lot of money, in the end, it's kind of, it's better. Like, with your own house, you want to mitigate the problems before they happen, I guess.
So, the district is currently working under a five-year strategic plan designed to be in effect through 2020 with four focus areas. So, I'd like you to choose at least one of the focus areas and discuss our progress toward that. So, the four areas were teaching and learning, leadership development and talent management, systems, process and resources, and culture. So, pick one, what's been the district's progress?
Um, I think they're doing really good with culture-wise, because there are so many, when we first moved to Scranton, I guess, um, we thought Scranton's pretty white, um, but I think that when you really look, there are all these pockets of different cultures here and all the different languages spoken at the schools and all the refugees coming in, I think that's great for Scranton and for our children to be exposed to all these different cultures and languages, and I think that the schools are doing a really good job with that, because I know there's a lot of refugees that go to my children's school, and I know that they're doing really good for the refugee children, and my kids are super excited, and I think other kids in their classroom must be as well, like, to have like, oh, there's these kids from Bhutan in my class, or these kids are Congolese and they're in my class, and that's so cool, so they get to learn about not just Scranton, and I think that's a really, really, really good thing, and I think the district's doing really well with that.
Okay. So, is there another topic of strategic importance to the district that we haven't covered that you'd like to discuss?
I think that, um, I, I'd seen something in the paper about wanting to cut like art classes to help the budget, and I, I don't, I don't feel, I mean, I'm, I was an art major, so I feel like in high school, art was my favorite classes, you know, um, and I'm sure there were a lot of other kids that feel like you just love art classes, and I think that you tend to minimize that, because like, oh, it's just art, but that'll help kids with like other areas as well, like music and, so I, I think that whatever we do, like, if I was on the board, if I was on, trying to work with the budget, I would do whatever I could to try to save arts funding, like music, art, and phys ed, I heard, has problems in some areas as well, like with funding as well, and I think that those are all really important for kids, especially the littler ones.
Okay. So, Chantal, that's actually all the questions that I have for you, but you've got two minutes for a closing statement to tell the voters why they should select you.
Um, well, I have a lot of creative ideas for what to do, um, for the budgets and just the schools in general. Um, I would, even if there wasn't a budget shortfall, I would want to try to implement like gardens at the schools for the kids. Um, I also think that I, I wanted to look, if, if I get voted into the board, I want to look into grants for STEM education and science funding, because that's also very important and an overlooked area sometimes. And I think that as a mom with children in the system, I'm really invested in what actually happens in the schools as well, and I guess also the last thing is that, um, I feel that with my social worker training, um, I would be in a good spot to mediate, like, we, we get mediation training in our classes, and I would be in a good spot to mediate between like the board and this teachers' union, because it seems like there's a real breakdown between communication, at least from what I observe, so I think I'd be well-placed to be able to do some mediation as well.
Okay. That concludes our interview with Chantal Rich. Again, Chantal is one of 10 Democratic candidates running for Scranton School Director, will be voting for four, and you'll find her on the Democratic ticket. So, again, Chantal, thanks so much for coming in today, we appreciate it. Our next candidate with us today is Bob Sheridan. Bob, thanks for being with us.
Thank you very much for the invite and, uh, it's a pleasure being here.
So, Bob is a current school board member, serving his second term, and is also serving the second year as president of the current school board, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, a little bit of history for those who may not know Bob, born and raised in Scranton, he earned a GED through the Scranton School District, he has, again, been on the school board for two terms now. Civic involvement, he's been the president of the Dutch Hollow Neighborhood Association for a long time, 20 years.
20 years, yep.
And is also serves as the Fraternal Order of Police Memorial Fund, he's been serving eight years as the treasurer of that fund. And professionally is a retired Scranton police officer, uh, is currently the owner and president of DNS towing and auto sales, and is also a Pennsylvania State Deputy Constable.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So, Bob, let's get, let's get going with our questions. The first question, as you know, and I say this all the time, school board members are elected volunteers, they're unpaid for their service for what I know is an extremely important job. Tell us, what is the role of a school director?
Well, the role of a school director is, we do hiring and firing, and we do policy, and we watch over the general dealings and operations of the Scranton School District on a daily basis.
Okay. So, tell us now, why should voters elect you? What is your experience, your major accomplishments that are relevant? What distinguishes you from the other candidates? Tell me why I should vote for you.
Well, I, this is my second term, like I told you, and I worked very hard. Back in '09, when I was elected for, uh, school board, um, my pet peeve was especially the safety of our children, and you know, with things going on today with our schools throughout the, the country, uh, there's a lot of problems. So, I worked very hard to make sure our schools were safe, make sure our, our security systems were up to date, our credentials for our parents that were, uh, that were up to date, to make sure that we know who was coming into our schools, to make sure that they, who was picking up our children, were, were the right people and the safe people, and, uh, we're working on, we have, uh, we even placed the metal detectors down at the Scranton High School and the West Scranton High School, uh, we have wands now that we wand children, because we know that different things are happening now, and we want to make sure our children are safe, and, and, uh, so I, that was one of my, my pet peeves. Uh, the other reason is, I love children, and I love to make sure our children, our grandchildren have the best education that we know. We know today it's harder times with education, trying to get the right criteria for our, our children, and I want to make sure that they are, have the best education and the best books and, and pencils and everything else they need to make, get the job done, and the best teachers, of course.
Okay. So, Bob, by all accounts, the district is facing serious financial issues. Please share your knowledge of the issues and how you think they can be solved. The next question, I'm going to focus on infrastructure, so let's now talk about things other than infrastructure in terms of our financial issues.
Sure. Well, what happened, uh, was back in 13 or 14, uh, we have mandated from the state of Pennsylvania pension funds that came up, crawled up on us, and they were a large amount of money that every district in the, in the state faced. But then what happened then was we had the impasse of the state budget, which was, I believe, nine months, that we went out without any money at all in the school districts, which hurt us tremendously, and the amount of money was millions of dollars that we were put behind the eight ball, plus the pension funds, every school district in the state got in trouble, and we had to work on it. Now, what we're doing to work on that is, right now, the Scranton School District is, we're doing incentives for our retire, for our teachers, for our aides, for our maintenance, uh, we're doing an incentive, a retirement incentive now that would, um, take out a lot of the teachers that have the higher years, and they have the step, they have the higher pay and, and, uh, and the higher benefits, and then we would replace them with the ones we have to replace, we would have, we would replace them with a lot lower pay, and the benefits would be a lot less, and that would save us millions of dollars over the years. So, we're looking at that, that's going to help us save. Uh, we're also looking at, uh, I worked with Senator Blake and Representative Marty Flynn and Representative Hagerty, uh, we, uh, I looked for the plan com money. We had plan com money come in for the last 10 years that we'd never knew about, because the state never noticed, told us that we had forms to fill out. Well, that's about $8 million, $8 to $10 million coming to us now, that we're looking to get almost any day now, and so we're doing a lot of things to curb the lines and look at different things, how we can close, you know, make it without hurting education, but making it a little bit shorter to make better education for our children, but yet our budget will be lowered.
Okay. So, let's talk about infrastructure now. The district is comprised of, as you know, the 16 school buildings, which are two high schools, three intermediate, 11 elementary, many of which are aging, some of which I attended. Do our facilities meet the needs of our students in today's world, and how does this impact our financial position?
Well, yes, they, they meet the needs, and, and if you've seen it yesterday, I, um, just, uh, signed a contract for a $12.3 million infrastructure project that will put new windows, new boilers, uh, work on some roofs, uh, do better air quality for our children, and that's a $12.3 million project that's going to cost the school district nothing, zero. Uh, if there's any cost on the other side of that, the company will take care of that and pay for it, and we have a written guarantee on that. So, we're getting a lot of work done now in, in our older schools that we would never had done before, would, it's not cost us anything, because our capital budget right now, because of the, uh, the impasse of the budget, has a lot less money in it, because a lot of the money had to be used for the general budget. So, this is a coming at a, at a great time, where we're going to have a lot of work done and upgrade our schools, so our kids can have the best air quality and the best windows and, and invol- environmental around them that we could possibly have.
Okay. So, as you, I'm sure you know, the district is currently working under a five-year strategic plan that's designed to be in effect through 2020 with four focus areas. So, please choose at least one of these focus areas and discuss what the district's progress is, and those four areas were teaching and learning, leadership development and talent management, systems, process and resources, and the last one was culture.
Okay. Well, we're, we're working on, again, like I said before, taking our teachers and putting them in the best place that they can be, we are taking our classes and looking at the classes that we had, uh, less students in, and make, and taking those students, put them in, in a little bit bigger class, not big, large classes, just the right-sized classes, making sure our students get the best education that we can out of there, we are training new people, we just opened a new facility over at, um, Electric Street, uh, and, and that is a great facility for our special ed, and they're doing tremendous things over there, and it's, and it's really coming out to be a great building.
Okay. So, Bob, is there another topic of strategic importance to the district that we haven't covered that you'd like to discuss?
Well, of course, there's always a better way, we're always looking at a better way, and we're always sitting down and going over, I, I work with, with unions, with Rosemary Bolan, and with our superintendent, Dr. Kirian, um, as the president of the school board, I'm always sitting down and looking at better ways and, and better education, what we can do to make sure our students get the best education that we can.
Okay. Bob, that's all the questions that I have for you, but you've got two minutes for a closing statement?
Yes.
You can let the voters know why they should choose you.
Yes. Uh, my name is Bob Sheridan, and I'm, uh, going, running for my third term as school board, and, um, I'm married with three beautiful children, and, uh, I'm running again, because I want to make the best education for our children that we can. My, I strive every day as the president and a school board director to make sure that our education is in place, make sure our students have a safe school and a safe transportation to get to our schools, and I, and I want to keep it that way. So, I humbly ask for your vote on Election Day, May 16th, for Bob Sheridan for Scranton School Board.
Thank you. That concludes our time with Bob Sheridan. Again, I want to remind everyone that Bob is cross-filled on both the Democratic and Republican tickets, and you'll be voting for four out of those candidates on the Democratic side, there's 10 candidates, on the Republican side, there are seven, but we will be electing four, uh, come November. So, again, Bob, thanks so much for being here, we appreciate your time.
My pleasure being here, thank you.
Our next candidate is Rob Waldeck. Rob is a faculty member, teaching neuroscience at the University of Scranton. So, Rob, thanks so much for being here with us today.
Well, thanks for inviting me.
So, Rob is, um, on the Democratic ticket for school director, that's, we'll see him there, and just a little bit more information, so, born in Philadelphia.
Yes.
Moved here to Scranton to teach at the university.
To teach at the university.
And you've been here since 2001.
Yes.
Um, so, obviously went to high school in Philadelphia, but you earned your bachelor's in government from Lehigh University, uh, went on to earn a master's of public administration from the University of Delaware, and then took a left, right, and upside-down turn and earned your doctorate, uh, from Temple University in biology. So, you're both a government person and a scientist at the same time.
Yes, yes.
All right.
I, I believe in the sort of semi-Renaissance, but I've been very fortunate, I've been able to kind of follow my career and a lot of, I'm very interested in government, and I was able to do a lot there, but I always have been interested in science, that's always been, and so, I kind of, really in some ways, came back to science.
All right. So, also, uh, in terms of civic involvement, you've been involved in a lot of things, obviously the university's Scranton very civically engaged, and you also served on the greenhouse project up at Naog, right?
Yes, yes.
For a while, so, um, uh, that's a kind of a snapshot of the things that you do, you're also the director of neuroscience, I think you said, at the University of Scranton, and an adjunct faculty member at Geisinger Commonwealth School of Medicine.
Yes, actually, and also at Drexel College of Medicine in Philadelphia still.
Okay, so, involved in the community, still involved in education, and, uh, I have a six questions for you, and the first one is that, uh, school board members are elected volunteers, that's what I always call them, unpaid for their service for what is an extremely important job. What do you believe is the role of a school director?
Okay. Well, I, I believe the school board director, uh, is there to support the, the students and to provide, uh, policies that are going to lead to academic achievement, and in doing so, that means they're going to have an administration, particularly the superintendent heading of the administration, they will be bringing policies to the board, but the board does have to take an active role in reviewing and analyzing those policies before being, before they are passed and then implemented. Obviously, they also have a role in terms of finances. Um, you know, you can have a great plan, but if it's not funded, it's not going to work. So, the board has, obviously, a key role there in obtaining the finances, uh, uh, you know, watching over the budget to make sure that a plan can be carried out.
Okay. So, Rob, why should voters elect you? What is, what's in your experience or major accomplishments that are relevant? What distinguishes you from the other candidates? Basically, why should I vote for you?
Okay. Um, well, I think you and others, hopefully, outside of the room here, uh, will vote for me, because I, I think I have a kind of unique set of experiences, I've been very fortunate, my careers have spanned, as you said, uh, government and, and science, education, education administration, um, as, as my early days as a government major, and then as a, a person who had a master's of public administration, I worked with public policy, I dealt with state and federal agencies that were trying to work out agreements, I think that's going to be, and I'm pretty sure that's going to be very important in terms of our financial situation, and so I think that's a way the board has to sort of turn to, it's not something that's traditionally been a board thing, but we knew, we do need to get the money, and that's going to be one of the things to do. The other thing is, uh, you know, I've been an educator for over, uh, 20-plus years, and in that, I've gained experience in, obviously, teaching, but also I've become an administrator, and I've, I've developed curriculum proposals, I've reviewed curriculum proposals, I've been involved literally just this week in a program review of our neuroscience program, I have a sense of what a good educational academic plan should look like. Um, the recent plan that came through the, uh, the, the district this year, I don't think that was how it should go. You need to have someone who's going to be putting a proposal together that everyone can read, that has the evidence behind it, why we should do it, the goals, it should have how we're going to know that it's working, and it should also be out there, it should be, the parents should see it, the board should see it with time, and that way, what I found in my work is that when you do that, and you get the shareholders all involved, the product works much better, they trust it, people trust it, and I think that's one of the things I can bring, uh, a, a sort of turn to rational decision-making in the process, that I've been fortunate, again, in my experiences to gain.
Okay. So, Rob, the district, by all accounts, is facing serious financial issues, and you did allude to that. Can you share your knowledge of the issues and how you think they can be solved? Can you share your knowledge of the issues and how you think they can be solved? And I just want to say, the next question, we're going to talk about infrastructure, so let's talk about things other than infrastructure right now.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, as, the, the key thing, you know, when you look at the deficit that they're facing, the first jump is, oh, there's got to be a lot of waste we can cut. Yeah, there's always going to be waste we can cut. There's got to be a lot of non-essential personnel we can cut. Yeah, that's true too. I mean, that's any situation, generally, there's, and that's something that I would be certainly willing to look into and be part of it, reviewing. But I think we have to get real and realize, this is not just a Scranton problem. If you look at all the reports from the school board associations of the state, of the state, excuse me, most districts are having this problem. The state is cutting its funding to school, schools. It was about 50% they contributed in the, to expenses in the 70s. It's now down to like 36%. It's not equal. They're not giving equal funding to each area. They passed a Fair Funding Act, but it's only about, that is supposedly giving a more fair distribution of funds, but it's only about 6% of the budget because it only goes to new money. So, a lot of districts are just not getting their fair share, and it's our taxpayer money. It's our money. So, those kind of things, the board, I think, has to really become a lobbying group. We, not that they will become a lobbying group, but they have to get into lobbying. They have to get the parents motivated, which means a little more trust. They have to get local legislatures. We have to get other districts. I mean, this is an issue that should be a no-brainer because it's affecting so many districts. We should be able to get the legislature to deal with this. So, we have to get them to hear us, and I think we have to work together, mobilize all these forces. That's really the only way that's going to help the financial situation. It's not going to be just local. There are some things local, but that's not going to be the big thing to do it.
Okay. So, the district is comprised of 16 school buildings. Two are high schools, three intermediate, 11 elementary, many of which are aging, some that I attended. Do our facilities meet the needs of our students in today's world? And how does it impact on our financial position?
Okay. Well, first, I'll admit, I, I'm not as up-to-date on this because I'm not in the school board area, but in terms of, you know, watching my daughter go through the three levels, elementary, the middle, intermediate school, and then Scranton High, you know, there's, it's a wide distribution. I mean, you get something like Scranton High that's relatively recently built, and you have some of the other elementary schools that are recently built. They're obviously providing, in a way, a better education in some ways because of just those improvements, whereas other schools are just in really severe, you know, disrepair and, and really need a lot of work done to them. I think that, you know, at this point, it's, it's going to be, again, it's going to be an issue in terms of, some of these schools are going to need serious capital infusion, and it's, at this point, I think, you know, it is something we have to deal with. I, I think, at this point, I don't, I'm not really sure, though, how it could be dealt with in the next few years because of the other problems of not getting state funding. If we could get the state funding to balance things on a year-to-year basis, then I think we could deal with that problem.
Okay. So, the district is currently working under a five-year strategic plan that's designed to be in effect through 2020 with four focus areas. I'd like you to choose at least one of the focus areas and discuss what you believe that the district's progress is. And those four areas were teaching and learning, leadership development and talent management, systems, process and resources, and the last one was culture.
I, I think the, the teach, was it teaching and learning?
Teaching and learning was the first of the four focus areas.
I, I think teaching and learning, obviously, I, my experience is probably generally in that area, as a teacher and as a learner. I, I think that, as, as I said before, what I, what I've seen and in talking with different people, it seems that there definitely seems to be a lack of kind of coherent sort of playing out the strategy. That is, there may be strategies, but they're not coming out sort of on a day-to-day basis. And so, that, I think, again, some of these plans need to be reviewed by the board more carefully sometimes, and they need to be sort of examined for, for that sort of thing in the sense that the, we have to kind of make sure that, you know, the plans kind of get implemented in a way that they were, what the original intent of the, of the plans were.
Okay. So, Rob, is there another topic of strategic importance to the district that we haven't covered that you'd like to discuss?
Well, I mean, I, I sort of mentioned it in the opening. I do think, you know, in rolling out the academic, the new academic plan this past year, to me, you know, really kind of, also kind of got me motivated in running because I'm sort of, I'm used to seeing how we've developed new plans in education, so I kind of have an idea of, of some of the things that are done. Granted, you know, university, K through 12, they're not going to be exactly the same, but the principles are the same. And so, I think, what I see, though, what I see is this kind of lack of transparency, which I think in the end hurts the school district because then nobody trusts them. And they could be giving us something great, but nobody trusts it because it's just kind of thrown out there, and it's not really seen by many people until suddenly somebody, you know, at a school board meeting says, oh, we're going to think about doing this. We're going to reduce the last period of, of the day and make it sort of a non-teacher involved, and it's going to be sort of student-engaged learning. And that, I think, it just kind of shows, it's either that it wasn't well-thought-out or that it just, you know, they haven't put it down on paper and at least reported it out. And so, as I said before, I think any kind of academic plan, there should be a written report. I have found no written document in terms of that academic plan. When I've talked to the teachers, they say that they've seen none. So, that's, to me, you know, you have to have it written so people have time to look over it. I mean, it's not, it is complicated, so you can't expect people to just, you know, you can't expect board members, if somebody comes in and says, oh, here's the proposal, and I'm reading it during the meeting, that's not how it's going to work. And you can't expect parents when they just see me get it, and then, oh, yeah, here's it is. I mean, if I were that parent, I'd say, you don't know what you're talking about, and we don't know what's going on. So, I really do feel that's something that needs to be stressed, stressed, because, one, it gets a good plan, it gets to academic achievement, but two, it really builds trust. It builds trust with the administration and the board of directors, the board of directors administration, and the parents. Everybody's sort of on a relatively even keel. I mean, there are going to be disagreements. People aren't going to agree all the time, and that's fine, that's normal, but at least people know what they're talking about then.
Okay. Rob, that's actually all the questions that I have for you.
Oh, okay.
So, you have two minutes for a closing statement. You can tell the voters why they should select you.
Okay. Well, again, I thank you for inviting me. I believe, I would like to be school board director because, one, education is probably one of the most challenging and important issues I think this country is dealing with, particularly public school education that's affecting, it's affected myself, it's affected my daughter, who went through school here in Scranton, and it's affecting a, a large majority of students throughout the country. The, public education leads to increasing opportunity for all, and that's going to lead to better jobs, better innovation, better technology, all the things that drive our economy and basically keep this country strong. I, second reason I want to be board director, school board director, is I, as I said earlier, I feel I've been very fortunate to have a, a series of experiences that are very good at helping, I think, some of the things that are, that are needed at the school board these days. One was the finances. Yes, as I said before, there's, there are some local things that need to be done, but in large part, school funding is, is a state and federal problem these days, and particularly in Pennsylvania, the state. We're one of the worst-funded states in education. We're one of the most unequal states in education for school districts. We have to, the school board has to get the parents, we have to get other districts, we have to be heard, we have to go out to Harrisburg and get that money. Secondly, I do believe that I have this unique experience in some ways of being an educator, an administrator with the neuroscience program, that I've seen how academic programs progress. I've seen the pitfalls, but I've also seen that when you do the work and you lay it out and everybody gets involved, including the parents, including the taxpayers, that the product is everybody's product. People are going to support it better, they're going to trust it. And so, that's why I believe I would be a good school board director. I would like you to vote for me.
Thank you. That concludes our time with Rob Waldeck. And Rob is one of 10 candidates running on the Democratic ticket for Scranton School Director. And don't forget, we, as Larry is trying to turn off his phone.
Don't mean it. It's not the candidate.
No, it's not the candidate, it's Larry. That, Rob is one of 10 candidates, and we will be electing four of them. So, again, Rob, thank you so much for being here with us today.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thanks.
So, we have our 10th final candidate today, Mike Williams. So, Mike, thanks so much for being here with us.
Thank you for having me.
So, a little bit about Mike is that born and raised in Scranton and graduated from Bishop Hanan High School. Mike went on to earn his associate in business administration from Lackawanna Junior College, of course, now Lackawanna College, and is a journeyman pipe fitter from the United Association of Plumbers and Pipe Fitter Local Union Number 524, and is a licensed mechanical contractor in the city of Scranton. In addition to that, you work in Wilkes-Barre as a project manager for New Horizons Industries, and you work in the Social Security Administration Building, is that right?
Correct.
In Wilkes-Barre? Okay. Civic experience, Mike is a board member of the Scranton Recreation Authority and is a secretary for the North Scranton Little League Board of Directors, but you have not run for public office before, is that right?
No, I have not.
Okay. So, this is your first try at our interview table.
Yes, it is.
All right. So, my, our, Mike, I have just a few questions for you, and the first one is, school board members are elected volunteers, unpaid for their service, but for serving an extremely important job. Tell us, what is the role of a school director?
Okay. Well, the role, in my opinion, of a school director is to set, set the vision of the district and adapt policies with directions to reach those goals. We also would hire and evaluate employees, adapt and oversee a budget, and approve collective bargaining agreements, and legislate, and provide the necessary tools for successful education.
Okay. So, Mike, tell us, why should voters elect you? What in your experience or major accomplishments are relevant, and what distinguishes you from the other candidates? Tell me why I should vote for you.
Well, as a former business owner and project manager, I'm thoroughly qualified in the analysis of budgets, specifically materials and labor costs, and in planning and scheduling the work of others. Also, as a parent of three children who, who are in the school district, and the wife of Janet, we built our home in this city, and we have, we built our roots here, and I want to be involved in the community. So, I want to try and, and make a difference and, and help improve the Scranton School District in any way I can.
Okay. So, Mike, by all accounts, the district is facing some serious financial issues. So, please share your knowledge of the issues and how you think they can be solved. And I just want to say that the next question, I'm going to talk about infrastructure, so let's talk about the financial issues as they pertain to something other than infrastructure.
Right. Okay. Well, financially, the school district is in trouble, as we all know, and we're on the brink of a state takeover. So, we have to do everything we can to prevent that, because the negative impact of, of the state coming in is going to be felt throughout the entire region. So, it's going to have an, an effect not just on Scranton, but, you know, probably northeastern Pennsylvania in general. So, that could, that could hurt economic development. So, we have to do everything we can to, to, to get our business in order in the Scranton School District. So, and I think what we need to do is to create a strategic plan with goals and benchmarks, and we need to monitor that plan, and then be ready to make any changes necessary as a board, as soon as we go outside of that plan.
Okay. So, the district, let's talk about infrastructure. The district is comprised of 16 school buildings. Two are high schools, three are intermediate, 11 are elementary, many of which are aging, and as I continue to say, I went to school in some of those buildings. Do our facilities meet the needs of our students in today's world? And how does this impact our financial position?
Well, I think some of our facilities do. We have some modern schools. Scranton High School is, is pretty modern. Some of our elementary schools have, some are new, some have been recently renovated. And so, but, we do need to, we do need to invest in our infrastructure. And, and I have a note here somewhere, but anyway. We need to, we need to sustain all of our resources, and that includes our buildings. So, we need to continually improve on them before, before they come major renovation projects. So, that's one of my areas of expertise as a building manager for the government is to, is to analyze lifecycle replacements, renovations, and, and building projects. So, I, I would be, I think my expertise definitely goes into the area of facilities.
Okay. So, Mike, the district is currently working under a five-year strategic plan. You did talk about needing a strategic plan.
Right.
There's one in place now that's designed to be in effect through 2020, and it has four focus areas. So, I'd like you to choose at least one of these and discuss what you believe is the progress of the district on that, because now we're in 2017, it's a through 2020 plan. So, the four areas are teaching and learning, leadership development and talent management, systems, process and resources, and then the last one is culture. So, pick one of those, at least one of those, and just talk about how the district is progressing.
Yeah. Well, I think our resources, so we need to sustain and invest in our resources. So, continuing education and development of our, of our teachers and administrators so that they can be the best that they can be. So, so, professional development, continuing education are things that we need to invest in and, and monitor and make sure that, you know, make sure our professionals are the best they can be to teach our children.
Okay. So, Mike, is there another topic of strategic importance to the district that we haven't covered that you'd like to bring to the forefront, that you'd like to discuss?
I'd like us to, to put an asset management plan together for all of our facilities, so maybe a computerized maintenance system that, that tracks all of our equipment for preventive maintenance, for, for materials used, and for history on, on repairs, so that we could better manage our assets going forward.
Okay. Believe it or not, those are all the questions that I have for you.
Oh, okay.
But you have two minutes to give a closing statement, and you can tell the voters why they should vote for you.
Well, voters, I humbly ask for your vote on May 16th. I'm a family man with three, three children in the school district. My wife and I built our home in this city. We've invested in the city, and I want to try and help. I want to get involved in the process, and I want to, and I promise to work hard to do what, to make the necessary decisions, to make the correct decisions that are in the best interest of the students and the taxpayers of the city of Scranton. Thank you.
That concludes our time with Mike Williams. Mike is cross-filed on both the Democratic and Republican tickets.
Yes.
So, one of 10 that you will vote for on the Democratic ticket, one of seven on the Republican ticket. Remember that we will be electing four of our nine school directors during this municipal election year. So, Mike, thank you so much for being with us today. We appreciate your time. This concludes, as well, our time with all of our candidates. I'm happy to say that all 10 of the candidates for Scranton School Director participated in our interviews today, and I want to thank the audience, you at home, and the voters for tuning in and learning more about these candidates for what is an incredibly important job as an elected official of the Scranton School District. I want to let you know that the League of Women Voters will also host a debate with Scranton City Council members who are running on the Democratic ticket, and that debate will take place on April 24th, and you can check the League's website at l w v lackawanna.org for the information about that. In addition to, to coming to see the, the debate live, it will also be aired on ECTV and will be shown on the League's website, as will these interviews with the students, or with, with the, the students listening, with the candidates for school director will also be shown on the League's website. And again, that's l w v lackawanna.org. I'd like to thank Mark from ECTV, because without his help, we would not get through any of this and be able to share these important things with you. And I want to invite you to join the League of Women Voters. We are a group of right, local citizens who are concerned about making sure that we have election information on our candidates. We won't take up a lot of your time, and we invite you to join us and come and help us put these kinds of things together. So, with that, I'd say, don't forget to vote on May 16th, the primary election, which The primary election, which is very often a throwaway from a lot of people, they don't think that primaries are important, is incredibly important. Very often, we elect our school directors in the primary. So, I invite you to make sure that you get out and vote on May 16th, and tune in to ECTV to learn more about all the candidates. Thanks so much.